Good morning, again. Welcome back to Harden County Commissioners Court. This is our regular meeting Tuesday, July sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. It is ten oh one AM and all members of the court are present. This meeting is called to order. If everyone will please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Roberts, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Mr.?
Our Degress is heavenly Father. Thank you for allowing us to meet. Thank you for watching over and guiding us as we go about our business of doing this court's work. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number three, approved minutes of the July second, two thousand and nineteen, regular meeting and July the eighth, two thousand and nineteen, special meeting as presented by Glenda Austin.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, cancel law register claims from the July second, two thousand and nineteen, regular meeting as requested and approval of cash statement as presented by Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, one hundred eighteen thousand, two hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. On our cash report, in our general checking account at Wells Fargo, we have zero dollars. In our general checking account at Compass, we have one million, nine hundred eighty thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-one cents. In Texpool, we have eleven million, three hundred eleven thousand, sixty dollars and ninety-six cents. For our total cash funds of thirteen million, two hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars and forty-seven cents.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. McWilliams. Item number five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by the county auditor, Angela Dorr. Good morning, Ms. Dorr.
Good morning. Our expenditures on July the third were one hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred ninety dollars and seventy-four cents. The expenditures for Commissioners Court today are one hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred seventy-two dollars and forty-one cents. Attached is a list of additional bills in the amount of sixty-four thousand, eight hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents for a total expenditures and transfers of three hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars and fourteen cents. Gross payroll for July the eighteenth are four hundred seventy-three thousand, five hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety cents, and the total transfer for that payroll is seven hundred seventy-one thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirteen cents.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Cooper to approve payment of county bills as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, discussion of possible action regarding cost of living adjustment, also known as a COLA for retirees. Debbie Mendesawal had asked to place this on the agenda, but she is out sick this morning. However, we should have some information in our packets. It should be the same information reviewed last meeting, and we ask for some additional time to digest this and come back today and possibly take action. I also ask Debbie to reach out to some of the retirees and invite them, and I see them here today. Anybody would like to speak, just raise your hand and I'll call you to the podium and you'll be more than welcome to be heard. Ms. Neal, you have anything you want to say?
Sure.
Okay. I knew you couldn't wait.
No.
This is Nancy Neal. Good morning.
Yes, I think everybody here knows who I am. Been was here thirty-two years, very proudly served in the sheriff's office, and I am proud of our sheriff now. And anyways, what we're here and what we've asked for in two thousand and twelve, up until then, a cost of living raise was given to the retirees. And we understand that there is an expense to it, but seven years, I think it needs to be looked at, and ours, our checks are still the same and everything else is going up. So we just ask y'all to consider it.
Thank you, Ms. Neal.
You're welcome. Was I under my two minutes?
Well, you could have had. You could have had more. I was messing with you.
I'd like to say.
Come on up, Ms. Walters.
Yes.
This is Debbie Walters. Everybody knows Ms. Walters. How are you?
I'm great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm very grateful to have worked for the county for thirty-three years, thankful for my insurance retirement, but my insurance with my husband and I, it's thirteen hundred dollars a month. So I would be grateful, I'm sure, on with everyone else, if y'all would consider that. And I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Anyone else that would like to speak on this matter? How many retirees are here? It looks like close to ten. Quite a few. Thank y'all for coming. Anybody else would like to speak, now's the time. Any member of the court would like to address the subject? Mr. Kirkendall, I know this is a matter that's always near and dear. It's all to all of our hearts, but you kind of have taken the reins on this as far as not just raises, but everything regarding how much our gap is on retiree, the unfunded liability that we have, and you're probably the most knowledgeable. When I compare you to me, you're the most knowledgeable about this subject, so I don't want to slight anybody else. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, sir, I agree that it's time, I think, to give the retirees a raise. My biggest concern is increasing to the unfunded liability. So I would propose that we would try to pay for at least half out of the contingency and more if possible, but I know that's really an item for you and the auditor to really look at, so I would defer that, but I would like to see us give them one. I think the two percent and the thirty percent are very close, and I would tend to defer to the thirty percent CPI, which is the most expensive, but considering it's been seven years since they've had one, I think it'll bring them up, so that would be my recommendation in knowing what it's going to cost us and what's going to do with the unfunded liability.
Just to go over that again, I read it in the last meeting, but I want to read it again. A one percent flat increase for retiree would cost the county two hundred seventy-six thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars. A two percent flat increase would be five hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. A thirty percent CPI would be five hundred eighty-seven thousand, three hundred eighty-two dollars. Those dollar amounts I read off are the cost to the county, and we can pay it all up front if we have the money to do that, or we can finance a hundred percent, or we can pay some and finance some, as Commissioner Kirkendall had brought up a few moments ago.
Judge, I would recommend the thirty percent and fund half of it out of the contingency, and then once we finalize our budget, if we decide we can go all out, we'll take a look at that at that time.
Okay.
I'm also in favor of that.
I have family members that's retired. I have every one of them are my friends. I guess that's why they pay us the big bucks and make these big decisions, but I look at this, and I agree with other commissioners that this is, and Nancy, that this definitely needs to be looked into, but I compare it kind of like I do assessing my roads each year, what I'm going to overlay, how many residents I have living on that road, how bad a shape it's in, because we're limited on the amount of money, but I'm going to vote to not give a COLA because of the way we are in with our finances and what we have to do in the other parts of the budget. So I'm opposed to a COLA.
And as far as my position, we've talked about this many times over the past four or five years. I think it was the court's intention in two thousand and seventeen to give a COLA, and that's when Harvey happened, and we decided to table it. Last year, the appraisal values came in much less than they were the year before. Again, that was because of Harvey, and we tabled it again, and it's time now to either take action one way or the other. Before last week, when it was brought to my attention that the employees, or I'm sorry, the retirees would get somewhere between five and eight dollars on their paycheck, and it's going to cost the county nearly six hundred thousand dollars for them to do that, it just didn't make sense to me. I agree. Cost of living's going up, just as Ms. Neal said, but I also feel like, you know, when everybody retired, they knew what they were going to make, and I don't think there was any expectation that there would be an increase. However, to kind of meet in the middle, I would agree to a one percent flat increase and pay the whole amount for two hundred seventy-six thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars. However, the majority of the court has voiced their interest as going for the thirty percent CPI, pay in half and financing the rest. So if somebody would like to make a motion, we'll take a vote.
Judge, can we, can we take this into further consideration as we get down to the budget? Does it have to be approved today, or can we?
It does not have to be approved today, but I would hate to not take some action today with this many people.
I think a vote needs to be taken place while all these people are in here.
I hate to have to ask them to come back again. And as far as the money goes, we know that we have a little over six million in reserves, and if we want to commit whatever amount we decide to commit today, we'll come out of that.
Then I would make a motion, we do the one percent flat.
A motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to approve a one percent flat increase and pay the entire amount, the two seventy-six, one twenty-five.
And that is why, Judge, if we want to add anything to the unfunded liability, we can pay that out of contingency. So that would be my reason.
We have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion?
It's not going to really, one percent flat and thirty percent CPI is not really going to change that much on the, it's not even changing any at all, really, as far as what they get, if I'm looking at this right, right?
Even a thirty percent is not going to give them, they won't even net ten dollars a month.
Right. And that's what I'm looking at on this area. So basically, it's just going to change what we pay it, or where we get our money from, from the one percent flat to the thirty percent CPI.
Okay.
Which has been kind of our discussion throughout this whole process, is that how much it actually nets the employee. I had asked before if the court could just give a stop in every year to the retirees, and that answer came back as no, because y'all could really benefit from if we just gave y'all a once-a-year check from the county versus, it'd be a lot less expensive than a half million dollars to net ten dollars. So, you know, for instance, if we just gave everybody two hundred and fifty dollars a year, you know, that's going to be double of what you're going to get through retirement, and it would cost us a lot less money, but it came back that that's not legal for the county to do since you're no longer an employee.
Any other discussion? And again, if any of the retirees would like to speak, I'd open it up. I will take a vote. All in favor of the motion for a one percent flat increase for retirees and paying the full amount, two hundred seventy-six thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars out of the surplus fund balance? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. That motion was by Kirkendall and seconded by the chair. Move on to item number seven. Discussion of possible actions to set the two thousand and twenty TC DRS retirement rate. Again, this is Debbie's item, but she's not here. I can tell you what I asked the auditor's office to plug in for the retirement rate and the proposed budget. And ask the court to agree to that rate. The rate that we must have is, Angela, why don't you tell me exactly what we're supposed to have, and then I'll tell you what I asked to include in the proposed budget.
Your minimum retirement rate has to be fourteen point thirty percent, excuse me, and your minimum supplemental death is point two four percent, for a total of fourteen point fifty-four percent. We currently pay fourteen point fifty percent, and the judge asked for fifteen percent.
So that would be fourteen point seven six for retirement and point two four for supplemental death.
That's correct.
And that would increase the amount that we're currently paying towards the unfunded liability by just a few percentage points, but I was trying to close that gap if we could, and by doing so, and we'll get into this when we get into the workshop, but the budget is balanced based on using this retirement rate. So I would recommend that we go with this fifteen percent total, and it's broken down at fourteen point seven six retirement and point two four supplemental death.
Is that a motion, Judge?
Yes, it is.
Second.
Have a motion by the chair and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number eight, discussion of possible action to set permit fees and hours of operation for the Citizens Collection Station. Commissioner Cooper had worked with Misty and put together the rates, and they are attached in the packets here. I'll just read it off. The permit fee for somebody dumping a truck bed, and that could be one bag of trash up to an entire bed of their truck loaded full of trash, would be ten dollars. A trailer up to ten feet would be fifteen dollars. A truck bed and trailer up to ten feet would be thirty dollars. A trailer over ten feet for a maximum of thirty feet would be forty dollars, and a truck bed with trailer over ten feet at a maximum of thirty feet would be fifty dollars. I had proposed some numbers slightly higher than that, but Commissioner Cooper thought they were a little too high and suggested this. As I look at this, Nubbin, if you add the ten and the fifteen for the first two, that would be twenty-five dollars. So do we want to make that thirty-dollar rate? Does it need to be twenty-five instead of charging more? Does somebody brought a truck bed and trailer?
That could go either way, Judge. I figure once they get to that point, five dollars isn't really going to make a difference, but yes, it could be twenty-five depending on what the court thought on that.
And then hours of operation would be Tuesday and Thursday from nine to five, and on Saturday from nine to one. The following items will not be accepted: any hazardous materials, paint, chemicals, tires, or white goods. White goods are defined as household electrical appliances, including but not limited to televisions, refrigerators, stoves, washers, dryers, freezers, water heaters, and dishwashers. Now, that may change at some point in the future, but in the beginning, in order to get the TCQ permit and keep things simple, we decided to not take any hazardous materials, paint, chemicals, tires, or white goods. That is something that we can look at changing now if we want to, or we can look at changing that in the future, once we get the operation up and running. Again, my recommendation on the permit fees would be just a little bit higher than that, but we can always start out with this and go from there. Any comments?
Is this a court action?
Yes.
So you're going to move the thirty dollars to twenty-five?
If that's what the court wishes to do.
I think that would only be fair with the other being put together, and it's twenty-five.
Yes. Second. I would move that we accept this with, you already got it, with a modification from thirty to twenty-five.
On the truck bed and trailer up to ten feet?
Yes.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, considering possibly approved job description for part-time Citizens Collection Station employee. Mr. Cooper has reviewed the job description that was presented by Ms. Mendesawal, and I think everything's in order, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And I'm deferring to Commissioner Cooper because he's going to oversee that position.
Thank you.
Yes.
That, uh...
And this is all out at Hawthorne Airport, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That pay group, eleven, Debbie's not here to verify, but I think that's twelve fifty an hour, which is our basic for part-time employees.
Is that a motion?
I'm making a motion, so we approve that.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts to approve the job description. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number ten, consider adoption of resolution twenty-three nineteen in support of the Texas Department of Public Safety locating a driver's license office in Harden County. Commissioner Cooper and I met with Senator Nichols and Representative White a few weeks ago, and they've seemed very positive that it's not going to be a problem to locate a driver's license office here in Coontz at the building across the street that used to be Coontz Insurance. However, they requested that we adopt a resolution to show that the court is in support of bringing that driver's license office to Coontz, and also that we will provide the building, including the utilities, and that we will also adapt that building to make it useful as a driver's license office. I'll read the resolution, states whereas over fifty-seven thousand Texans call Harden County home and would greatly benefit if we had a local BTS driver's license office located in Harden County, and whereas Harden County, when less populated than it is today, had a driver's license office located in Coontz for many years. Whereas the citizens of Harden County must travel several miles to an overcrowded driver's license office in Beaumont or to a driver's license office located in other rural areas for services, many times taking an entire day of driving and waiting in lines. Whereas time would be unfettered for the Beaumont and other rural driver's license offices personnel to efficiently help the citizens of those communities, and whereas partnering with Harden County will leverage state taxpayers' funds and enhance the department's continued improvement in customer service metrics. And whereas Harden County elected officials are eager to offer the use of a building approximately sixteen hundred square feet in size for driver's license services, and will also offer to pay for utility expenses and worksite preparations to accommodate the needs of the department. Now therefore be it resolved that Commissioners Court of Harden County, Texas, on behalf of the citizens of Harden County, respectfully requests the Department of Public Safety to locate and operate a full-time, full-service driver's license office in Coontz, Harden County, Texas, signed the sixteenth day of July, two thousand and nineteen. And I move it, I guess I shouldn't, it's got to be a commissioner.
Move it, please.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven, consider adoption of resolution twenty-four dash nineteen opposing installation of an elevated median through Lumberton, Texas on U.S. Highway ninety-six, also known as Main Street. This is a resolution that was adopted by the Lumberton City Council, and we were asked to support them in their endeavors to oppose the installation of this median, primarily because of the, it would be unsafe to the citizens trying to access businesses on U.S. ninety-six, also known as Main Street. It would also hinder those businesses located on U.S. ninety-six. So this is the similar resolution that was adopted by the Lumberton City Council at their last meeting, and we have been asked to support them in their endeavor to oppose that median. That would be an elevated median through ninety-six with, I believe, five crossovers the entire length of the city for people to make U-turns to go to businesses unless that crossover is located out of business interest.
What was, I got to just, what was Texas's reasoning for the median to begin with?
I'm not, I'm not aware. Do you?
If I remember correctly, in that meeting, they said something about they were relying on the accident report, or crash reports is what they call them now, that has occurred in there, and this is one suggestion by their engineers to alleviate that, but in the meeting that we were in, the chief, the mayor and all in down there says they feel like that is going to enhance more accidents, so.
I agree with that as well.
I think they were relying on the history of the crash reports in that area.
Right, I didn't know what the reasoning was in that sense.
I believe the chief said the crash reports that they're looking at, they're not broken down with how many are caused by somebody pulling into the center of turn lane.
Yeah.
It's just number of accidents on ninety-six, period. We have a motion?
I made a motion.
I said it, right.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts to adopt resolution twenty-four dash nineteen. Any additional discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kirkendall?
I just, I bring up for the record, a lot of complaints I get about the length of time it's taken to overlay, and the amount of rock chips and windshills that are occurring due to the length of time the overlay.
I hear from my family very often about the length of time it's taken to overlay ninety-six. They think I'm supposed to know when it's supposed to finish, but I don't.
They just started grinding up sixty-nine this morning.
Great. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twelve, discussion of possible action to approve an order abandoning public road never developed on Old Harden Townside in the Harden County School Land Survey, abstract number two forty-eight, as recorded in volume two, page forty, of land flats of Harden County as requested by Angela and David Mel. Mr. Pelt, you want to move to table that?
Yes, Judge, we had a public hearing on it, and there is opposition to it, and there's more work that needs to be done on it, and I move that we table it.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Cooper, Cooper to table item number twelve, and we won't table it till the next meeting, we'll just wait until we're told to table it on the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to table passes unanimously. Item number thirteen, consider authorization for county judge to sign Verity Master Agreement with Heart Inter-Civic for the purchase of new digital ballot scanners and Master Software License and Services Agreement with No Ink LLC for poll pads and all related apparatus and accessories for the purchase of new election equipment, as approved in Commissioners Court on July second, two thousand and nineteen. This is a request by Mrs. Austin, and I believe that Rebecca has the agreements, but she just got them yesterday. So if there's a motion to authorize me to sign these, I would like you to include in the motion that that permission's given once Ms. Walton has approved those to form.
Move we approve based upon you signing whenever Rebecca gives you the okay.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. I also want to add that we had decided to finance the purchase of the ballot scanners, and that is at a four-year term at a zero percent interest, and that is included in those agreements. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number fourteen, permission to solicit bids for purchase of road and bridge materials and emulsions for all precincts, requested by Misty Sims' purchasing agent.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number fifteen, permission to solicit proposals for group health, dental, life, and vision insurance benefits program. I think, I brought a list, but I don't know where I put it, but I'll give that out to you at the end of the meeting, but I've got a list of the, all of the members of the Insurance Evaluation Committee that's chaired by Commissioner Roberts. They recommended that we, and it was based on my recommendation, but they agreed that we solicit proposals for group health, dental, and life insurance, but not vision. So if a motion is made on this today, I would ask that you exclude the vision insurance. Everybody agrees that we pay a good rate for vision insurance, that is through a separate program anyway, the rest of these are grouped together, and that we get good vision benefits. So that was a recommendation of the committee, and I agree with that if a motion's made to solicit these proposals.
Okay, and this would take us out of the Texas Association.
But no, we're going to compare to what the rates that we have now, and the other part of that recommendation that I made was, even if we lower our premiums, I do not want to lower our coverage, so I don't want to change the amount of coverage that we have now, and want at least what we have are better, and same deductibles, co-pays, I would not want to go down on what we have as far as coverage, I'd just like to see us go down on what we're paying for employee-only, employee, children, employee, spouse, and family coverage. The family coverage, all the dependent coverage is so high that most people can't afford it. I think we have seventeen people participating in one form or another of employee, spouse, or employee, child, and we have two people that participate in the family coverage because the rates are so high, and I'd just like to see what the options are, and we'll bring it back to the court with a recommendation. So I'll go ahead and make that a motion. I'll move that we solicit proposals for group health, dental, and life insurance, and appoint the Insurance Evaluation Committee as the evaluation committee of the proposals that are received, and that they make a recommendation to Commissioners Court, hopefully in late August or early September.
I'll second that, and I agree that it pays to look at it, but I would point out to the court that we went this route for many, many years, and we would get with an insurance company, and we would get good rates the first year, and then the next year they would go up, and Glenda was here, and I think that all that we're here will remember that we petitioned the Texas Association of Counties for about five years before they finally took us under their wing. So I think we need to be very careful about taking that one-time deal and then ending up where it actually costs you a lot more.
I agree.
I think the major thing was the increase after the first year, and with TAC it's been pretty steep.
Okay, and being as chairman, let me enlighten just a little bit. We paid in the county, in other words, Blue Cross Blue Shield TAC made over eight hundred thousand dollars off the county last year. Over the last ten years, it's been five hundred, it's been a half a million dollars. That's their average. But they continue to go up on our rates. Why, what we don't understand is why they keep going up on the rates when they're making more and more money off of us, you know? It just don't make any sense.
My hope is that going after proposals, the TAC will come down, at least on the dependent.
We'll make them look at it and, you know, go over what they're proposing. That's what we're looking at.
I think it's a good idea, but on the other hand, also taking consideration what Mr. Pelt said, and we need to remember that, there was a reason why we got with TAC and it took us so long to do that, and I agree with the judge that these, and Commissioner[1761.83] And I agree with the judge that, that these, uh, and, and Mr. Roberts, these, uh, prices are outrageous. Uh, so we just need to take all that consideration, and with that in mind, we're gonna miss Mr. Pelt's knowledge of all that stuff when he's gone, so we already, I don't want you to go.
He said he'll consult for a fee.
I probably shouldn't give an opinion, but I won't be here. But it was very difficult. Insurance was something that at times we couldn't even get because of our experience rating.
Debbie, uh, pointed that out to the committee yesterday, and Alvin did as well. So, uh, they're very aware of that, and I think they'll be reminded, and, uh, I'm sure that will be taken into consideration.
It doesn't hurt to try to ration them down.
I agree.
A little competition.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number sixteen, discussion and possible action regarding recommendation from the Evaluation Committee concerning proposals received for judicial software, Ms. Sims, purchasing agent.
Morning.
Good morning.
Proposals for judicial software were issued on March fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, at two PM in the Purchasing Department front office. Myself, Stacy Eckert, and Erica Singletary were present. We received five proposals, one from Tyler Technologies, C and D Networking, iDocket, Journal Technologies, and EDOC Tech. The Evaluation Committee was Rebecca Walton, Dale Williford, and Aaron Tupper. The Evaluation Committee, uh, saw several presentations. They saw a presentation from Tyler Technologies, EDOC Tech, and C and D Networking. They took a lot of time checking references and contacting other counties to s- ask about the software and see how they liked it, et cetera. And after a lot of consideration and several meetings to discuss, the recommendation of the commi- of the Evaluation Committee is EDOC Tech.
Thanks, Ms. Sims. Also wanna thank Ms. Walton and, uh, Mr. Williford. I don't see Mr. Tupper here. But I know y'all did spend a lot of time on this. As you noticed, the bids were open March fifteenth, and we're here four months later with a, a recommendation from your committee. I know y'all pulled other people in as well and, uh, went over everything with the, uh, other department heads that will, uh, have part in this, so I just wanna thank you for all the time that you spent on this, and I think y'all did a great job. Thank you.
Move we accept the committee's recommendations for EDOC Tech.
Second.
Have a motion back to Commissioner Pelt and a second back to Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I just want to, uh, add, I probably should've said it under discussion, but this will be phased in over a couple of years. Uh, we have a certain amount, uh, budgeted in the Commissioners Court budget, uh, for judicial software, and, uh, my hope is that that will cover it, and if not, then I will, we'll bring that up during budget workshops in the future. But, uh, I think the, uh, plan is to start off with both of the prosecutors' offices in the near future, and that will allow them to, uh, get off of the old software that they have that hasn't been supported in a number of years, and, uh, they're having issues with it as we speak. And then, uh, it also helps them to, uh, get up to modern technology with, uh, the discovery rules. And, uh, we'll hopefully, uh, cut down on some of the in-office work that everybody's having to do to make discovery available, and it'll also be better for all of the, uh, defense attorneys to obtain the discovery from those offices. Any other discussion on that? Ms. Hall?
So this would mean that the other departments have no, um, say in this election at all?
Um, not based on what we have today. Did, did you talk to the Evaluation Committee about, uh, did you meet with them?